Making amendments to the agenda, we're going to be removing item seven, which is ruled received and we'll be adding in legislation, resolution to display the flag of half staff or the chair. If those changes are applicable to everybody, we'll go ahead and take a motion for approval.
I'll move it.
And second.
Second.
Paul and Fred.
I'm on.
Moving on down to our approval of minutes. Last session, we had a public hearing for the budget minutes, our regular meeting minutes, and our work session minutes. If everybody's had a chance to look through those and there's no changes to be needed, I'll take a motion for approval.
I'll move it.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm on.
None opposed. Moving on now to administrative reports. I was able to attend the acorn ceremony for Boys and Girls Club and Cashers, opening up the new team center up there. And that was last Monday, wonderful little event. A lot of, a lot of people showed up and, and I think they have a full summer program. They've got over 300 children that are going to Boys and Girls Club this summer for some reason, straight to up in that area and ever expanding. Do any other commissioners have anything to report this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Turn to the, nothing cabinet motion. We'll move on now to informal comments about the public. And up first this evening, we have Ethan Fortner. Ethan Fortner.
I'd like to start by saying good evening to you. And I'm Ethan Fortner. I'm the pastor at Johns Creek Baptist Church. Been a Jackson County resident my whole life. I was born in Silva, raised in Canada, and I currently live on Canny Fork. And the issue I'd like to bring before the commissioners obviously is the library issue. You know, never in my life did I think that garbage like that would be put in front of our children. The brother come to the church the other Sunday night and showed us a few pictures of what's in one of them books, Monk. And it's sickening, a sickening thing. I heard that they're trying to compromise with them and put them in the adult section, but they don't even want to compromise. Todd, there is no compromise. Why will they not? I believe that these people, and they, and I've read some comments on Facebook about what some of them said, it's not about the children. It's most certainly about the children, Monk. If it wasn't about the children, they'd compromise to put it in the adult section and leave it be. But they are after the children. And Hitler, now I said Hitler, he quoted that if he could have a child at the year of seven years old, he wouldn't have them for a lifetime. Then he also quoted, give him children, and in 10 years, he would change society. Well, I keep cattle and sheep farm, and I know for a fact that if you put heifers together, you ain't gonna have no baby calves, Monk. You put mews together, you ain't gonna have no baby lambs. And I'd say a good majority of the people that are pushing this are homosexual. They can't have their children of their own, so they want them after ours. And I do not think it's right. The second part of it is I used to be proud of our county, Todd. When I was a boy growing up, I'm 31, and I can remember a time when you didn't have to worry about what was taught in public schools. You didn't have to worry about anything being pushed on your children in public places. And that's what they're doing is, is pushing an agenda on our children. Public ought not be the place to push agendas on children. And I'm a parent. I've got one little girl, and as long as that stuff's in the civil library, she'll never enter it. I don't feel like that's fair to her and it being a public place that I, as a Jackson County native, pay taxes for. I, like I said, I was born here, raised here, and live here. Fifty percent of the people that's for this junk can't say that. All right, you were put here by the silent majority. Now, it looks like the majority of them don't want it, but you're all Republican commissioners, put here by the majority of the people in Jackson County that believe the same way you do. And I want to ask you what this is. Jenny Lynn, what is that?
I don't know.
Todd? Mr. Lexon? Monk? I want to leave you one verse. Therefore to him that knoweth to do good, and doeth it hot, to him it is sinned. Thank you for your time.
Justin Castle.
Justin, you signed up twice.
I've got two topics.
We only allow one.
One.
We can cut it in half and if one hundred, you can go to the next topic or...
Okay. Commissioners, I come before you as a husband, a father of five, soon to be six, but more importantly, as a voting in believer, and frankly, as the chair of the Jackson County Republican Party. And I want to remind you of the moral beauty you have as elected leaders. For the past few meetings, I have sat and listened to both sides and honestly with an open mind. My wife and I come from other areas that had county libraries, and they functioned very well and had interlibrary exchanges. I was able to use those libraries. But when I moved here 20 years ago, I was able to use the regional system. Now, I've heard that we don't have a, that we don't need a nanny state, that we can protect and parent our own children. But where, where was this outcry when the schools forced our kids to wear masks in the classrooms? I've heard that we are Appalachian strong and that we can make up our own minds, yet are we scared to have our own county library? I've heard that the library with its setting in the old courthouse is the crown jewel of the county and even maybe Western North Carolina. Why then do we let this jewel only to be rented out for a dollar a year? This appears that we don't value it like we say we do. I've heard that we don't want other counties telling us what to do. First, the regional library system has those counties included, so they would be affected. And frankly, they have a right to say something whether they are for it or against it. But secondly, a library board is made up of members from all three counties. The other counties are already telling us what to do. A county library would solve this problem. I've heard that both sides have used Bible verses to legitimize size their arguments. But I would say you have to look at the context where people are pulling these verses out from. I've heard that we just need to keep God out of it, but that's the ultimate problem. We have kicked God out of our society since the 1960s, and that has resulted in the decline that we are seeing now. But before someone says separation of church and state, please remember that that phrase is not in the Constitution, that it is found in a letter from Thomas Jefferson, which I would advise people to read the whole complex of the letter and the situation around it. But I also want to remind those people that this same Thomas Jefferson also allowed a church to hold services in the chamber of the House of Representatives. Separation of church and state is not removing God from society. I've also heard that we needed to take care of our library employees. With the exit from the Fontana Regional Library System, most of the positions would receive a pay increase and benefits. Why would they fight to stay in? Unless it's for power. To push an agenda, a Fortune 500 CEO typically makes millions of dollars a year. In contrast, the President of the United States makes $400,000 per year, yet millions of dollars are poured into the campaigns of both sides. Why would one do that for just $400,000 a year? Because of the power it brings. I know Republican and Democrat leadership have spoken on this matter, but it shouldn't be a right or left, conservative or liberal argument. This boils down to those who want to protect our children versus those who do not. This is a moral argument. We used to be able to debate on matters once a person turned 18, debate as adults, but agreed to leave the kids alone. That is no longer the case. You all, as commissioners, have a moral obligation, moral call, and we interest you with your decision in this matter, regardless of what any constituents may feel, including myself. I urge you to protect the innocent, protect our children.
Thank you, Mr. Castle.
Pete Blaine?
Yeah, I'm Pete Blaine. I'm living in Silva. It's going to be extremely hard to, to follow those to support everything that they both said. So I've followed quite a bit on Facebook, and what I've noticed is, and I'll just say this, the other side on this issue, they're attacking the messengers, they're attacking our commissioners. So when they cannot defend or support their ideas or their position, they start attacking the people that start attacking the messenger. So also, there's a lot of false information that's going on. I spoke at the last meeting, I clearly stated that F R L did not provide one dime, not one penny. You commissioners know that you are funding $1.4 million. Someone spoke about five people behind me, and one of the newspapers stated what this person just said. They said, well, the F R L is giving Jackson County $1.4 million. You know what the truth is. The money is coming from taxpayers of Jackson County. I would love for Jackson County to take back our library. So like Justin said, we've got a three-county board. We're dependent upon two other counties to set our own policy and our own library. Do we want to be dependent upon other counties, the other county commissioners, who they appoint? We have no control over that. I feel like we do need to take control back of our Jackson County taxpayer-funded libraries. We do it with every other board, every other department we've got, and I definitely support that. Someone, someone, someone mentioned that, why don't we put a referendum on the ballot? Well, every two years, we have a referendum, and our referendum is sitting before us, and you five elected officials, you were all elected with a majority, a clear majority. So the silent majority has spoken two years ago, or last year and the year, and two years before that. And so they chose you five to represent the county and to make clear decisions for the county. So do we want a third-party board, being the F R L, making decisions for our county? I would prefer our own citizens make those decisions, that, that we take back our own Jackson County library, and we, we can have our own, own board, however you guys want to make that board up and make decisions here locally. We've got budget over $100 million. We've changed since 1945, when the F R L was created. We're large enough to be self-sustaining and self-supporting. Thank you for your time.
Becky Abel? Ms. Abel?
Hi. I haven't spoken to you before. I'm happy to be here. My name's Becky Abel. I'm from Silva. I'm going to ask people who's not from here. I know, I hear it all the time. Actually, I'm a North Carolina native, a couple counties over. My parents divorced and moved me to Florida when I was 12. And then I spent the 50 years there, but we moved back, and now we're North Carolinians again. I'm happy to be here. Moved here in the middle of the pandemic. Bought a house in East Silva, over near the Baptist church over there, and didn't know anybody. First few months, we spent sort of feathering our little nest and getting moved in. And pretty soon that got old, and I wanted to meet some people, and we were still trying to avoid getting sick, and, and people weren't really going out to restaurants and hanging out. But we had this gorgeous library right in the middle of town. And so I went and got my library card, I signed up for Libby. By the way, I came from a pretty big town in Florida when I was living there, and in a nice library. Nobody ever told me about interlibrary lending. This little town's library showed me about that. I learned about Cardinal, and I found out that I could get books from anywhere. I don't have any kids anymore that are young enough to go to the library, but when my granddaughter came up to visit, we played chess in the children's area, and we had a great time. So here's the thing, that and a number of other amenities in this town are, are beacons to people to congregate, to get to know other people, to enjoy each other's company, to make new friends, rekindle old ones. And to me, that was a big value. I would hate to see the, the financial changes that would occur if we do this on our own. There would be a lot more expense. And I know you have, haven't had the time yet, as a consultant, go through all of the different precise changes that would cost our county more money. But despite the fact that I've only been in this particular county for five years, I pay taxes here just like you do. Each year, we all have our handful of taxes based on our property values and whatever else we have to pay taxes on here. And, and to me, that makes me equal. And my opinion is that we should stay within the system that works fine. If you don't want your children to see certain kinds of materials, why aren't you with them when they go to the library to pick out their books? And I would like for you to be able to understand that the parent's responsibility is to protect them. And speaking of agendas, there's nobody addendee in trying to turn people into gay because there happens to be some books that talk about what homosexuality is and shows body parts and things like that. If you don't want your kids to see that, you don't let them see it. You know what I mean? You keep them away from those books. Secondly, if that's an agenda, then, then perhaps all this God stuff is an agenda. Perhaps everything is an agenda, all right? So we, I'll throw microphones and try to, try to be reasonable about what makes financial sense with our tax dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Downing? Tom Downing?
I'm not Tom Downing.
Quick reminder, just for everybody, there's been, everybody's kind of gone over. At three minutes, it'll beep, just so y'all are all aware, start to wrap up your, your conversation at that point, or your comments. Thank you, Mr. Town.
Thank you. I'm Tom Downing. I live in Colloee. I want to thank law enforcement last, last meeting. It was a great show of support, and I really felt safe. And thank you to those people that were here, and I appreciate your service every day of the year 365, 24/7. I want to thank the IT team. It looks like there's only, only two people on the website. You have a new IT for the whole county, and I'm sure the IT needs to stop when you were setting up for that meeting and every meeting. Thank you very much to those, those people. It's a great job. Thank you all. This library issue is a chance to show leadership, and from my perspective, as a 20-year resident of this county, as a Christian growing up in the church that I attended, as a God-fearing man, I've seen leadership on this board. I've seen it in your faces, I've seen it in the way you've conducted yourselves, and thank you for that. But it's also a leadership opportunity to deal with other issues we're facing in this county. I'll just tick a few of them off. Affordable childcare. This board took leadership and they bought a building on last-minute notice. What's the plan? Where's the requests or proposals? How much money we're going to give to make that happen for working families? Working families need affordable childcare. Another issue was workforce housing. We all, we need that. What's the plan? Where's the leadership? Emergency management is another area. I don't know about you, but during Helene, I was watching the radar pretty closely. I grew up in Kansas. I've been in tornadoes. I've seen this extreme weather. It's the grace of God that we didn't get what they got north of us. If we had gotten it, what's our plan? I don't know. I haven't heard. I'd like to know. I'd like some leadership. And finally, education. For goodness sakes, I heard we didn't fund a teacher supplement this year. I don't understand that. If you're so concerned about children in the library, what about their teachers? And finally, I taught for 12 years before I got into another field. And I want to tell you, our superintendent, Dr. Ayres, is the finest superintendent I've ever seen. And you make her come every year, hat in hand, and ask for, for school lunch funding. That should be part of the budget every year. Don't make her come hat in hand. That would be leadership. So thank you for your leadership. I look forward to more leadership. Thank you.
Next up, we have Daniel Shields.
Good evening. I come to you tonight not just as a citizen, but as a peer. Again, I'm the vice mayor of the Village of Forest Hills. The last time I spoke, I made an emotional appeal from the heart as a neighbor. Today, I'm here to make a factual appeal as elected official who, like you, are bound by a duty to the people that we serve. Let's be honest about one thing. This isn't just a morality debate. This is a choice with real lasting and severe consequences for every, every family in Jackson County. This is a massive, completely unnecessary new tax burden they're considering placing on every single one of us. We've all seen our properties skyrocket with the tax evaluations. Prices have been rising, families are feeling the effects. To go alone as a county library would mean an immediate one-time cost, I believe, at the last commissioner's meeting of $600,000. How long are we looking at $600,000 extra for that? Years? How many millions are we going to waste that could go to other projects? Housing, education. This doesn't include consultant fees. I don't know if you've ever hired a consultant, but they're not cheap. This doesn't include program fees. Most of you allegedly are business owners, but has any of your projects always went to plan with nothing going awry? It's not even counting for that. We've never been shown a line-by-line budget that proves this is a wise financial move. We've been given promises, talking, but no analysis. We, we're still proof that we can provide the same level of service with programming for less money. The truth is, you haven't seen that proof. To leave the Fontana Regional Library System would be a reckless gamble with our tax dollars, leap of faith with no safety net. It's fiscally irresponsible, and it's just pushed by a few that'll have a devastating impact on us all. Let's talk about the real world impact. Four Jackson County schools earned a D last year, and we're not meeting our kids' needs. We're not meeting our students' needs, our targets, our falling behind compared to our sister and brother counties. Silva is not a leader in education for K through 12. It's barely making ends meet. And I've heard a lot of people say tonight, what about the children? Does that stop the moment they're born, or does the education matter? Because we're not providing that. Commissioner Bryson, you have a small child, I believe. Do you want him to go to public school in the current conditions here? I have a small child, and I would like to see it improve before she gets there.
I ask you not to bring my child in this place.
Understood. And lastly, to do this when District Three doesn't even have representation? I don't know if you saw, but Webster and Forest Hills passed a resolution to advocate against it, to advocate for ourselves, because we don't have any representation since our alleged representative, thanks to Jackson County, is just a root watch. It's home to all of us. Lastly, I don't know about you guys, but when I've had decisions in the Village of Forest Hills, I've had people come up and yell at me in public. I hope you know what you're doing, because you're going to get that a lot, and it's not going to be fun.
Cam Mitchell? Cam Mitchell?
Thank you. I'm going to try to limit this to a few words. This is my third time speaking to you. Both of the first two, I read a poem. So this time, I'm just going to say a few words. First, Mr. Bryson, I completely understand you not wanting your child brought into it. I respect that 100%. Please know that this issue has brought all of the children of Jackson County into it. The one thing I haven't heard, my third time here, reading the paper, one thing I haven't heard is anyone saying, my child was affected in this way by these books. My child went to the library. This actually happened, right? Everything I've heard so far is that hypothetically, it could be causing damage. But I have, I haven't heard anybody say that this actually happened. This is actually a problem that needed to be addressed. The second point is, I understand everyone here, when they stand up and the first thing they say is, hey, I'm, I'm Jackson County born and bred. My people go back this many generations. I understand that pride. I, I, I'm jealous sometimes. I wish I had those roots here, because this is a wonderful place to be. And I understand the reason that you guys point that out is because you know that to really understand the folks in this area, you kind of have to grow up in this area. And as much as I wish that I understood that and I was in on that, because I love this area, I get that I'm not. I, I know that I, I drive around places and I think, oh, that, I, I bet if I was born and raised here, I'd know what, what was on the other side of that, or whether or not it was okay to go over to this place or not. So I get that. And I understand not wanting change. I want to point out that the person who I'm understanding as a large part of the driving force behind this, Jim Gaston, is not, was, was not raised in North Carolina at all. He's certainly not in Western North Carolina. He wasn't raised in North Carolina. He's only been in Western North Carolina for a little over a decade, based on the publicly available resume that I found. In fact, he was raised up on a farm that is named Plantation, unless my sources are inaccurate. But there's a publicly available resume that was submitted to Macon County that shows he was raised on a location that's named Plantation, that he has only been in this area a little over a decade. So why are we letting someone who's only been in this area a little over a decade, who can't know anything about the folks in this area at their core any more than me, start a big old fuss like this in our county and distract us like this? The third thing that I want to point out is, I know that you guys have haven't until June 30th to make a decision. This is the third time several of us have come up to speak. I know a lot of folks are saying you guys were voted overwhelming majority. Obviously, that's why you're here. But that implies the assumption is that everyone who voted for you feels the exact same about everything. And I really don't think that's the case, because I've heard folks stand up and say they voted for you, but they're disappointed in this decision. So if by good faith you brought this effort up because you genuinely thought that the majority of residents in this county felt that way, since the majority voted for you, I hope we've proven differently. And good faith, you'll make a different decision. Thank you.
Good evening. We've been through several of these meetings, and I know you guys all know that there's huge support for the library, or you've heard it all. This evening, I'd like to talk about something I think is not really being addressed so much. I'd like to direct that, or speak to that directly. As numerous court cases have decreed a child's right to information in libraries, it's considered a right-free speech and protected by the First Amendment. This is not an optional thing. The Supreme Court hasn't done this. This is the law, verse 1 of the Bill of Rights. As I mentioned, this has been taken up by several entities, and they've all lost in these fights. Would you guys have Jackson County be another loser in a legal battle? Is Jackson County so flush with cash that we can waste hundreds of thousands of dollars in a legal fight that we know we're not going to win? This has already been its precedent. Right now, there are two groups that are waiting to follow suit. And you know why? Because it's easy money for them. It's just how it is. It's a legal, that's what lawyers do. Whether or not you agree with it. And if we do this, we're going to lose, because restricting information in libraries is a violation of First Amendment. Do you all personally want to be involved in this? Because that's what's coming. Additionally, the library staff here in Silver is world-class. You know, everyone talks about how this library is a gem. It is. There are professionals and impressive in what they must manage. Our library punches way above its weight in what they do. And part of the job is indeed to keep the county from getting sued for the reasons I mentioned above. These employees are protecting you. They're professionals. They've worked hard to accommodate the vague demands being made. They've made great strides in trying to compromise. They've done this children's card, which, that's a pretty good compromise, and they're riding the line of what would be considered a violation of First Amendment in doing so. If you insist on moving forward or amening the impressive and professional library staff we currently have, do you really think we're going to have the same caliber of employees after these are gotten rid of, after this abuse? Other people will see this. Will we get seasoned professionals or a bunch of simping yes men? And you guys run businesses. Is that the kind of employees that you want working for you? Can you name any organization's staff basement that's any good or not? If you're honest with yourselves, I'm sure you're thinking the same. Is this how you'd run this business? Because you guys are running businesses. This is county business. The library ages will descend into who knows what, and the county will suffer while paying even more money for the privilege. That's my progress, and it's a legacy that we'll be paying for for years. Personally, there are things to do tonight and stand in front of you again and again, and all these meetings in the past. What I see this entire effort is some sort of performative ridiculousness. I don't understand at all. This is grown-up adult work, as we all are. You have to leave your emotions and personal beliefs behind a lot. I've been there too. All right. Thank you. Respect.
Chris Hamlet? Hello. My name is Chris Hamlet, and I am a resident of Jackson County. 94,240 people. That's the population as of the 2020 census for Jackson, Macon, and Swin County. Of that, 43,000 is just in Jackson alone. Zero. Zero formal submitted complaints about the book "This is Gay," that people are so morally outraged. Zero formal submitted complaints about any of the public displays in our library. And if you're wondering what is required to submit a formal submitted complaint, a full library card, which is free, and to be a resident of one of the three counties. Five. Five submissions to get a minor, a minor resident's library card, which is a card that our Jackson County Library has created just for children to limit what they can access to. But we've only had five people that have accidentally submitted, have actually requested. I'm hearing all these people that are so morally outraged about the books and displays, and yet not a single one of them, not one, has submitted a complaint to the library to have these books removed. Why? So instead of these people are coming to you instead of going to the library, asking to take our library out of the regional system, which has already been stated would cost, just at the very least, for a one-month expense of over half a million, and very much more in a regular yearly expense, which would necessitate either higher taxes or reduced services and hours. Why? Why are we going the nuclear route instead of going through the processes and steps that have already been set up for people to submit complaints about material? Why? And I also heard comments brought up about the student access that we came with all students in the county to the library. Our Jackson County Library Board has been actively consulting the state library and state legislatures to get compliance with the Parental Rights Act. They've been doing everything to meet all of these people's requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Sorry if I messed that up.
I'm a resident here of Silver for 15 years, and what I've heard kind of covers everything. So I'm going to pass my time over to the next speaker. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lou Teeter.
My name is Lou Teeter. I'm a resident of Colloee. And before I read my prepared remarks, let me just say, as far as protecting our children, we've heard lots of things said in these meetings, some of them from county commissioners, about how the library is forcing pornography into the hands of our children. That's a crime. And yet, no one has reported it. That doesn't sound like you're protecting anybody's children. My comments tonight directed at everyone who supports our library, and I'll be building on some things this gentleman just said. First, I want to address how the five people sitting in front of us have violated sunshine laws and county ordinances. On one occasion, they made a deal behind closed doors to appoint two people to the FRL library who knew nothing about libraries with the sole purpose of using taxpayers' money to throw their ideology in our face. An ideology which the majority of this county projects, as evidenced by the overwhelming show of support by library supporters over this past month. On another occasion, they again broke sunshine laws and the county ordinance, too, and they voted to nullify the compromise broken by former Commissioner Gail Woody between those who wanted to remove the statue from in front of the courthouse and those who wanted it to stay. What's especially ironic, when John Smith was running for commissioner, he stated, quote, "The reason I decided to run is because the same things keep happening over and over in the county. Things get approved without discussion, and things like that." Now, these people decide what happens with our library. I, for one, won't believe anything they say, even if they vote on it, even if they sign a contract, because they obviously don't believe in rules, procedures, processes. They just want what they want. If they decide to stay in the library, later they can decide who's going to butt finance the library. If they leave the FRL, there will be such chaos, because they know nothing about using, let alone running a library, with everything crashing down. And even though they said it wouldn't happen, the library would have to close. Throughout this, the people, five people sitting here, have made no effort to reach consensus. They ignore the policies and procedures of the FRL when they try to demonize Tracy Fitzmaurice. If they looked at the policies, they would have learned that Fitzmaurice, Ms. Fitzmaurice, is doing her job as well as holding the First Amendment. The FRL works closely with the First Amendment attorney to make sure. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Dan Ritchie. I've lived in Silver for 44 years. There's been a lot of controversy around the cost and services of Jackson County Library versus Fontana Regional Library, and specifically the banning or relocation of LGBT books and displays versus freedom of speech, inclusion, and sex education. I believe both sides can be right in some areas and need to be heard, even though they disagree in their conclusions and proposed actions. I believe that how a decision is made is more important often than what decision is made in terms of getting acceptance from both sides. I know you're having a meeting between the commissioners and Fontana Regional Library. I think it's also important to get experts from related fields and accurate data about the various concerns. I recommend you consider putting a proposed action in a referendum to be voted on by the entire county, rather than have it decided by a board after hearing most public speakers representing a different position than that of board members. The Jackson County Library already has the following limitations for children. Children eight and under need to be with a parent all the time. Children nine to 12 need to be with a parent or stay downstairs if their parent goes alone upstairs. The upstairs has a reading material area for young adults ages 13 to 17, and the rest of the floor is for adults over 18. The library recently responded to expressed concerns by creating a juvenile limited card for ages 15 and under that limits checking out books only from the children's section, if parents want that for their children. I asked a couple of staff how many books and displays have been an issue for parents. They said only a couple of books and an LGBT display that is only one month out of the year. To clarify what books are concerned, I think you need to list those books so that the quantity and quality of those books can be seen as evidence, rather than just opinions and speculation. Because facts, truth, and evidence are important for accuracy and to minimize everyone's biases, I recommend you create an advisory committee made up of representatives of relevant perspectives, including parents, teachers, counselors, and doctors. For example, for the concern that children could be influenced to engage in different sexual behaviors by what they see in reading books, I think we need to hear from mental health professionals who have worked with children and LGBT clients. Also, experts who have studied identity development, and a medical expert on when puberty now typically starts and children may be more prone to look for sex education. I believe it is self-confusion and self-criticism in an unsupportive environment that can lead to self-destructive behavior or manipulation by others, not reading or looking at drawings. And one feels good about, when one feels good about who they are. So let's put our attention effort into helping children develop strong and healthy individuals, rather than focus on a few books that might be read by a few children unsupervised or not wanting parental involvement. Thank you.
Next, we have Terry Cole Smith. Ms. Cole Smith?
Hello.
Good evening.
On the back of this are some acts that I'm not going to read about. Put it in your hands, should I? Thank you. So I wasn't going to speak this evening, but I was asked to do so, as there were others who wished to speak but couldn't make the meeting. First, I want to thank you for expanding the attendance at your last meeting. The overwhelming attendance space, the overwhelming majority of those Jackson County residents who I have heard speak or emailed you are folks who wish to stay in the FRL system. Nonetheless, I still hear several of you claim that the majority of Jackson County citizens want to leave the system. I think it's important to note, the FRL was not listed on any of your election platforms and therefore not a mandate you were elected on. In an email I sent you last week, I pointed out that in reading various statutes that delineate the scope of commissioners' lawful duties, I saw the following: responsibility for overall governance of the county, adopting budgets, setting property taxes, enacting local ordinances, and appointing officials and members to various boards and commissions, as well as overseeing the operation of county government and ensuring the efficient delivery of county services. None of these include the micromanagement of appointed boards or committees, including inserting yourselves as the arbiter of library book policies. I also noted my concern that the board would become susceptible to First Amendment lawsuits. There are legal entities involved in requests that have been made of our libraries that you may not be aware of, and that, legalities, and that Sarah Steiner asked me to share with you. She points out that there is precedent set in arguments that could be made for reclassification of "this book is gay" due to its inclusion of information on sex apps that are limited to 18-year-olds and up. However, there are many legal cases where libraries have been successfully sued for having removed or moved material to limit access by minors. Ms. Fitzmaurice may appear unwilling to compromise, but it is very important to note that her actions are actually protecting the county from lawsuits. Some folks who are angry with her may not be aware that they are asking her to act illegally. Sarah shared several lawsuits in her email to you on the back of that, that she hopes will paint Tracy's actions in a different light, including a landmark Supreme Court case. In the interest of time, I will name the one that specifically addresses issues similar to concerns you seem to share. This was a Texas dispute involving placement of two children's books, Heather Has Two Mommy's and Daddy's Roommate, in the children's section of the public library. The court ruled that the city could not remove or relocate books from the children's section of the library based solely on the content of these books. The ruling emphasized the importance of free access to information in public libraries. There's also a current lawsuit just filed in Greenville, South Carolina, specifically asking a federal court to permanently block Greenville County policies and practices that have deliberately hidden or removed dozens of books that are positively portrayed transgender and gender non-conforming people. And I'm sure you are familiar with the First Amendment lawsuit that will shortly be filed that challenges the Yancey County, North Carolina, move out of their regional system. Does Jackson County have the time and money to fight lawsuits that it is not likely to win? Lawsuits that FRL Director and Jackson County Librarian Tracy Fitzmaurice is trying to protect us from? Are First Amendment lawsuits and the micromanagement of the library the legacy you wish to leave to the next board? Thank you, guys.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for taking our public comment. I appreciate that very much. My name is Jason Komenker. I'm a resident of Jackson County. I'm also a parent of a teenager that was born and raised here in Jackson County. Was born at Harris Regional Hospital and has been very much an active user of our library. Our daughter is very special to us, and we certainly want to protect her from any outside influence that may affect how we teach our daughter. So we teach our daughter how to watch out for things in her life, in our community, and in the library. And we do pay attention to what she's reading, what she's borrowing. I do want to address the fact that there's people in the other room that didn't get into this room. I see a lot of empty seats here. I'm disappointed that each of those people could not be in this room, who had arrived before 6:00 PM and who had not had the opportunity to sign up to speak. So I recognize that So I recognize that there are other people in the room, in the other room, and also perhaps watching on YouTube if this is live, and if it's not, the recording. So for those who are coming after me, I hope that you can speak into the microphone so everybody can hear that. I was here when Keep Our Library Downtown was formed, with citizens that were upset that our county commissioners had decided to move our library to the campus of Southwestern Community College, and we said that that was not acceptable, that we wanted to protect our children, save our children, from being exposed to the college students and the potentials of mixing our youth with, with young adults. So, we came together to keep our library downtown, and then it became Build Our Library Downtown, where we became a little more bold, and we said, no, we actually want a better library. Eventually, it ended up on the Courthouse Hill, but we had looked at other locations too, and at one point, it was going to be built at the old Western Sizzling location up where the bowling alley is. That was probably not a good decision, but our county commissioners decided that's where it was going to be moved to. Then there was a change in commission, and we decided to re-look at where we were going to place our library, and we all came together as a community and raised over a million dollars to make sure that our library was well-funded and had the furniture and equipment and books that were available to our community. We did all this as a community coming together. Now, we didn't all agree on how to do it or why to do it, but we came together and we said it's important. It was important that we protected our children and saved our children. We save our children from all kinds of things, from authoritarianism, from censorship, from hatred, from prejudice. We protect our children all the time, and I'm having a hard time accepting that we put in a lot of time, energy, and money in order to be having this conversation over and over and over again. Absolutely, our librarians are professionals and they know what they're doing, and they're trying to protect us and protect our children from financial irresponsibility. Six hundred thousand dollars a year in cost to be able to provide the same level of service, the same level of excellence that we are expecting today, that's irresponsible.
Hello Commissioners, my name is Kate McKittick, I've lived in Jackson County for twenty-two years. I currently own a home in Webster ETJ. Thank you for the opportunity to offer my perspective, I've learned a few things that I would like to share. Contrary to the assertion that the library has been unresponsive to community concerns, two significant changes were made to address concerns about young children being in the library without adult supervision. The child safety policy was updated in November twenty-twenty-three, and the age of children who may be in the library without adult supervision was raised from eight to twelve years of age. Also, a new type of card, which Mr. Ritchie explained, was introduced on March eleventh of twenty-twenty-five. These changes recognize that responsibility for monitoring children's reading material lies with parents. Number two, emails from the head librarian of the Jackson County Public Library and members of the F R L Board to Commissioner John Smith, seeking information about what changes people are requesting, have not been answered. I think, I suspect, most of us would agree that it's difficult to respond when concerns are not made explicit. Number three, although it would be helpful to have a list of materials people find offensive, even if we had such a list, each book would need to go through the request for review process. The request for review process policy was updated in March of twenty-twenty-four. In the last three decades, only one book has been challenged using this policy. Contrary to public assertion, there are no limits on how many books may be challenged. The only limitation is that once a book has been challenged, it may not be challenged again for three years. The one and only book to be challenged at the Jackson County Public Library in Cashers in the last three decades was It's Perfectly Normal. This book was challenged by someone who lives in Macon County. Number five, one silver lining of this conflict is that I've been talking more with my neighbors, one of whom said, why not just move the book to the adult section? This sounds reasonable, but let's think about that. If that happened, a twelve-year-old could find the book in the adult section, along with other books that have been written for adults. Not a great solution. Also, the library may open itself to accusations of soft censorship and possible First Amendment violations. If you think this sounds unlikely, I encourage you to consider the fact that a lawsuit was filed against Greenville County, South Carolina, by the South Carolina affiliate of the ACLU on behalf of patrons that challenges the county's practices regarding the restriction of LGBTQ plus-related books. The plaintiffs are seeking a federal order to block these policies and practices, which include removing, which I know you're not talking about, or hiding such books. Before you make a decision to remove the Jackson County Public Library from the F R L system, that may require more than a half million dollars to implement, I urge you to consult an attorney. I do not want my tax dollars spent on removing Jackson County Public Library from the F R L or paying for a lawsuit to defend practices I do not support. Thank you, and I wish you well as you navigate these challenging matters.
Chloe Jones?
Chloe? Seven oh one Ridgeway?
That's Mike.
Mike, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I can't write.
It's okay. Come on up, Mike. I'm, I'm sorry, it looked like Chloe.
I have never been accused of that.
That, that, hey, I try and do my best, sometimes I fail.
So did I.
I'm Chloe Jones. Although my family call me Mike. I live in Silver, thank you. Yeah, I listened to many wonderful persuasive talks in favor of Jackson County Library, I even made one myself, if I do say so. But nothing brought into focus clearly where we are at this moment than one at the last meeting, I think it was, someone who spoke in opposition. And that speaker, in addressing you all, the Commissioners, said, you are elected to follow a conservative ideology. And also reminded you emphatically, you are not rhinos. And I think we all know what that meant. And several others have repeated that position, even today. And I think you can parse that any way you want, but this is what it means. You are expected to vote the party line. And any matter coming before the county commission should be dealt with, not with an open mind, but according to a certain political agenda. Decisions should be made not on the basis of right or wrong, but what's in your script. And let me be sure, you're thinking, that my vote squares with my ideology. And I would say that about a liberal locks in a position too. If we could do like that, we might as well send robots and let them vote that way. Gentlemen, lady, haven't we had enough ideological warfare in this country? Do we need that here? So if you're going to stick to an ideological script, why are we even here? Why are we going through these motions that we've been going through for at least two meetings? We've had all these long meetings, we've had all these speeches, both pro and con. I'm sure you all have better places you'd rather be, I know I would. And you have sat there very stoically, and I must say, very patiently, again, places you'd rather be, places I'd rather be. When you have, could have handled it much more quickly and much more expeditiously with a phone call, with a private vote on yourselves on the phone, but you wouldn't do that, would you?
Hi y'all, I'm Brad Reisinger. See, I've lived in Jackson County for about seventeen, eighteen years now. I live currently in Webster in District Three. And I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about representation for District Three. It appears there's no precedent for our situation, because we elected a commissioner who wasn't eligible to run. We have not been publicly notified about her ineligibility to serve in this seat. First and foremost, how did we get here? The G O P had their chance to put up ineligible candidates before the election, they did not. How did the seat not go to the only eligible candidate in the race? But since she's symbolically been seated, it's understandable how Hooper voters would feel disenfranchised. The traditional approach for when a seated commissioner moves out of district says the commissioner resigns, the commission appoints a district resident as their successor until the next two-year election cycle, when a local election can occur. But this approach is usually used for the commissioners who move from the district after being legitimately seated. In our situation, the commissioner never lived in the district nor elegibly held the seat. There seems to be room in North Carolina's general statutes that allows commissioners to call for a special election when there's no precedent. What seems to be most fair approach for all would be for District Three to have a special election in twenty-twenty-six. Since filing for the twenty-six commission is coming soon, now would be the most appropriate time to deal with this. We're asking for transparency about how District Three is being represented, addressing, addressing the situation publicly, and showing leadership and charting a fair path forward. Finally, I ask you to save your actions on the F R L partnership until after you have an eligible Board of Commissioners to make this decision. Thank you, appreciate y'all listening.
Good evening. I spoke last time requesting a list of materials, and I'm not opposed to having a sexual education as a solution moving forward. Now, since writing this, I've learned about lawsuits, and I obviously want to avoid our library from having those. Maybe the sexual education is within the child, it's still within the children's section, but maybe on, on a higher-up shelf or whatever. And we've already talked about, there have been a number of people who have talked about the supervision the library requires, as well as the rules for the child's library card. There are solutions moving forward. The idea of taking the library out of the F R L is, is not one, and all the other activities, all the things. I want my children learning from sound resources, instead of having situations where the middle schoolers make things up. We know what we're talking about, right? We were all middle schoolers at some point, your curiosity does not go away. You just get some wild stories, and they can have some really, you know, severe consequences. There's also, there, in the library, there's fashion, there's other culture books, like nudity is part of life. You go to Italy, to France, it's, it's culture, it's art. And I want my kids to be educated on that, and not to be the twenty-year-old over in Italy snickering. You know, the, these are, these are sound cultural themes. And as I mentioned last time, the, sorry, I am on no sleep, I've flown for thirty-six hours on all the flights. So I'm, bear with me with my, with my cohesiveness or lack thereof tonight, but I look forward to coming to a solution, since the library is such a valuable tool. They were my first village when I moved here about ten years ago, and I take my four children there at least once a week. It's a wonderful tool for them to learn a variety of, of educational things, with blocks and all that sort of thing, tools, other toys and activities, but it's also skills around practicing their manners and showing respect towards their friends and adults in a variety of settings. Being inclusive is being neutral. One more thing I want to say is that I actually went out and bought a sex ed book with my daughter, who was going into the third grade, got to the menstrual cycle, and she said, oh, that's what those red things are in the bathroom at school. I was already late to the conversation. I don't want to be late to this conversation, it's a big deal. So, we can come up with a compromise. Thank you.
It's bad when you don't recognize your own name.
Well, I, you know.
You pronounced it well. Hi, I'm here to, tonight as a member of Jackson County's largest group of voters, the Unaffiliated. And while I'm not speaking for the organization itself, I'm also a lifetime member and regular volunteer with Friends of the Jackson County Public Library. If you've forgotten or never knew, the Friends raised nearly two million dollars to outfit the new Silver Library complex, and continue to contribute tens of thousands of dollars annually to support the library programs and services. Importantly, I want to acknowledge that you accomplished many important and difficult things. Your efforts on the new middle school show a willingness to listen and serve the county as a whole. But when it comes to the Fontana Regional Library system, with the notable exception of Chairman Letson, that spirit seems to be missing. Despite having signed a new inter-local agreement less than a year ago, and hearing strong public support for Fontana at the last two meetings, your public statements appear to reflect only the views of those within your political, religious, and social circles. Political pressures from outside Jackson County seem to wield outsized influence on your thinking. I've spoken here before, met with some of you, emailed others, except for Ms. Winchester, compromised a specific request, I've seen little evidence that my concerns or questions are even heard. Nor have you offered specifics about your objections. As I hope you are aware, and many people have mentioned tonight, there have been no formal complaints in Jackson County about library displays, and just one challenge to a book. Some Commissioners have publicly disparaged former board members and library staff. You've replaced qualified appointees recommended by library leadership with political allies and family members. By placing some of those same individuals on both local and regional boards, you've compromised what should be a nonpartisan system serving the entire community. Worse, these appointments regularly fail in their basic ethical obligations toward the organizations they serve, namely, the duties of care, loyalty, and obedience. Finally, I urge you to consult Mr. Kubis, have others had, on the extensive case law protecting libraries from government influence based on political, religious, or viewpoint-based objection. Passports, and notably, Tracy Fitzmaurice, have helped this county avoid known and well-mapped legal landmines, and that is something you should be grateful for.
Appreciate all y'all's comments. We'll move on now to our consent agenda portion of the agenda. First up, we have Ms. Fox with our finance report.
Good afternoon. I'll go over the highlights for the month of May. The general fund revenues collected to date, seventy-eight million, five eighty-eight, nine sixty-two, a seventy-six point seven seven percent of budget. The expenditures are currently at eighty-two million, three ninety-five, six seventy-seven, that's eighty-one point ninety-one percent of budget. The revenues are currently three million, eight hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars less than expenditures. The abhorrent taxes collected are at a hundred percent of budget, at forty-five million, seven sixty-two, three forty-seven. Motor vehicle tax, one million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five ninety-three, which is eighty-four point forty-three percent of budget, and the prior year tax is at sixty-eight point sixty-seven percent of budget, at three forty-three, four twenty-eight. We received the sales and use tax distribution for the month of May, which is February sales. That amounts $1,534,974. It's 3.39% more than we received in May of 2024. The Article 46 distribution was $164,747, and the average increase for the fiscal year is 1.6%. The landfill disposal fees collected, $29,56463, which is 92.6% of budget. And the prior year landfill fees, $54,660, which is 63.91%. The growth revenues, code enforcement is 10.42% above where they are. They've already over budgeted $16,279. The environmental health is under 19.48, and registered deeds is over 2.10%. I'd be glad to answer any questions on the report.
The general fund being under, is that disparaging time?
It is. The sales tax, we've only collected through February. So we'll continue to post those back this fiscal year through September.
Questions regarding our financial report? Moving on now to our budget ordinance amendments.
Got several tonight, end of the year. The first one's general fund budget ordinance amendment. It's an increase of $807,739, and it's from various abnormal tax and grants and revenues collected. The second one is for the National Opioid Settlement Fund. It's an increase of $62,500, and it's from Janssen Walgreens and investment earnings. And it's designated for future. I have one for the Self-Insurance Fund. That amount is an increase of $240,000. School capital reserve, the increase of $90,000 through investment earnings. School capital outlet, well, no, capital reserve fund. It's an increase of $45,000 from investment earnings designated for future. Fund 21 is an increase of $100,000 in investment earnings. That's for school capital reserve, and it's designated for future. Fund 23, which is Economic Development Fund, the increase of $3,900. It's for sponsorship for business appreciation. Fund 28, which is CPR Fund, increase of $10,000 from investment earnings designated for future. Fund 29, it's an increase of $76,800, and it's for the fire trucks for cashiers, highlands, and it's designated for future. Funds 42 is Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, increase of $7,000 for additional investment earnings reserved for future. Fund 64, which is the Economic Development Fund, increase of $50,000 from additional investment earnings, and that's for the Economic Development Fund program and property acquisition utilities. Fund 65 is Solid Waste Fund, increase of $75,750, and it'll be used for landfill gas monitoring. Fund 66 is investment earnings for green energy park donations and additional rents, $13,515. The next set is for project ordinance amendments. First one is Fund 44, investment earnings for site improvements. Fund 45, investment earnings, $225,000 for the indoor pool facility for furnishings and fixtures. And Fund 47, an increase of $75,000, investment earnings for construction for trails. That's all. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions from the board? It's actually on the Commissioner's Agenda's website. You can pull.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Moving on now to Ms. Henson and the tax collector's report.
Good evening. The current taxes for the county collected for May were $197,399. The delinquent taxes collected for the month were $25,746. There was a total collections for May of $230,114.96. There were refunds of $740.04 and releases of $660.10. And the rate at the end of the month of May was 99%. Any questions? Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent gen, or I'm sorry, the consent items presented, our financial report, budget ordinance amendments, project ordinance amendments, and the tax collector and refund reports? And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to new business and our tax assessor appointment.
I've provided you an email for Tabitha Ash every four years. You have to go through the process of appointing the tax assessor position, and she's asking for your consideration for her appointment for the next four years. You can see that, as required by the law, she's taken all unnecessary continuing aid classes, which she's outlined in this email, and I would recommend that you consider her for that position.
Are some of the courses she has to take, are they like survey, not survey, but can estimate her type?
Appraisal.
Yeah, appraisal, that's what I meant, sorry.
Yeah, there's a whole list that's required by the Department of Revenue in order to be a certified tax assessor.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Tabitha Ash.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Hooper? Commissioner Brosnan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Chairman Letson?
Yes.
Moving on now to our fiscal year 2526 budget ordinance. Mr. King.
So I guess over the last several meetings, both through the budget public hearing and also the budget retreats, we kind of dove into this. I heard from a couple departments that were requesting additional funding. We've made those modifications. The overall general fund budget would be $106,548,158. And then the other funds, as you see, I have a mouse, scroll down slightly. So as you can see, the total. Sorry.
You hit it.
There we go. Yeah, so the total, including all the inter-fund transfers, is $120,471,401 this year. And we went back over several of the drivers. Of course, the capital plan, where we have a lot of different school projects and county projects are a major driver of the additional resources. Also, we made adjustments in teacher supplements, an additional $200 per non-certified and certified, and also $70,000 for the junior ROTC program. In addition to that, there was additional for detention salaries to increase them to a base pay for law enforcement, so that was a big increase. And so, but we absorbed that within the current recommended budget by taking out of the Greenways Fund, making that fund decrease. And so anyway, the total, $124,71,401 for your consideration.
Questions from the board regarding our budget?
I do want to address two topics tonight. First off, this is teacher supplement. You've already touched on that. I think it was said here enough that we don't support the teachers, and we don't, we haven't give any supplements. So I would hope that you'll read through this and look at what we've given this year. Now, second thing. And what did you say that we decided to give? I know what we've decided to give, but please state it loud in the mic, please, for the teachers.
Yeah, an additional, it was $200 for non-certified and certified personnel.
And what are they getting right now?
They're getting $1,700, I believe, for certified.
I think it's $2,000.
$2,000 for certified.
$2,000, sorry, $2,000.
So we give a $200 raise all around?
Yeah, so it'd be, it's $2,200.
All right, that's first.
And how much? $800 for non-certified.
We want to get that, we want to get that fact straight. Second thing, school lunch. This might be a question for Ms. Fox. Ms. Fox, when did we start paying for school lunch as a county?
Last year was the first year that we had paid for it.
Right, so no other board before that did that, okay. And as far as other counties, do you see a whole lot of other counties that pay for school lunch?
Do breakfast and lunch for all students?
I don't see a lot.
Okay. So we want to get that fact straight. School system, I don't recall coming, correct me if I'm wrong, recall coming and asking.
During COVID, there was a supplement that they got, school lunch, correct? And what we did last year was we extended that and absorbed that as a county to continue that program. But it was even pushed further by us because we included all students, not just those that were economically disadvantaged. So it's every child in this county can receive breakfast and lunch at no call.
And we done that on our last board.
Last fiscal year.
With Mike, or Mark Jones and.
And Tom.
And Tom, correct. I don't recall, did they come and ask for that, or did we step up and?
She did come and ask for, I believe it was a continuation of this program.
Right.
This year, she, yes.
And last year, I think we set aside $500,000, is that correct? And what did the total come to?
$533,000.
And we paid that in full?
We paid $500,000.
Okay.
As all, you set aside $750?
$530. We did $530.
And there was a, yeah.
$530, but there's been a decrease in the amount of students, but that was also took for a little bit of increase in.
Food cost. So those are the two things I wanted to address, because we want to get those facts straight. The school lunches is provided 100%, breakfast and lunch, and it was done by our last Board of Commissioners. And as far as the $500,000 that we set aside, was there any discussion or any complaint from the board to pay that extra $30,000?
For what?
For the school lunch and breakfast.
There was.
No, okay, thank you. That's all I have. Any additional questions from the other board?
I like the way this is broken down more than anything I've seen so far. It's so much to go through and so much to understand. It's hard to do. I know that we've got to do something for the average taxpayer because our rate's going down, but the total amount's going up. And nobody wants to cut services. But we've got to do something. If this rate's going to stay at 32 cents, I don't know if we need more time, if we need to do interim budget, if we need to do. I don't know what the options are. I'm the newest one here.
Well, go ahead, Mr. Chairman, sorry. The budget has to be presented to the state June 30th, correct?
Has to be adopted.
Adopted by June 30th. So we do have some additional time in terms of 13 days, so. If there's something that you've. Can you explain the capital reserve funds? There has to be so much reserve for, put away for our county to help with leveraging debt.
We've had two school capital reserve funds, one for Article 46 sales tax and one for Article 40 and 42. And then the county has capital reserve fund to be used for projects only.
Right.
And I think if you look at the budget driver, the first three underneath projects, that kind of, that's half the growth that's in the fund. The other is the fire department, fire department and the public safety aspect, and then education. So those are the budget drivers that pretty much takes up all of them, all the revision above the breakeven, right?
Capital reserve, is that mandated by the state, a percentage of?
No.
Okay.
So the capital reserve, is that $2 million still?
2.1.
Search and transfer component.
And the reason it's a million more than last year is because of all the projects we got.
And you know, we're getting into that, Ted. I also want to get back on to education for a second. We're taking in, just on our projects for the school, how much are we looking at, the total?
Between the school and the county, it's over $100 million.
Say that again.
$150 million.
$150 million. Have you ever seen anything like that in Jackson County?
No.
Okay.
Well, I just want taxpayers to know where the money's going because somebody's going to be asking questions why their tax is going up so much. What you're saying is good.
Right.
It's good for people to hear why it's going to go up as much as it is. It's not because we're not trying to keep it down.
Right.
We're doing. How much total new, how much total new?
$150 million in new projects.
The problem is, I mean, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I've got, I'm friends with Mark Jones, I'm friends with Tom Stripling, and served with him, and I'm friends with other, no other commissioners that served before. But the problem is, and we've said it multiple times, that a Band-Aid has been put on so many of these projects for many, many, many years. And it's been just sidestep, sidestep, sidestep. So now, we've got a board, and we've got a great superintendent that is pushing, you know, for upgrades, and we've got an opportunity to do that now.
Well, the Band-Aids aren't going to fix anything anymore. Band-Aid for the Fairview Cafeteria that starts serving at 10:30 and doesn't stop until 2:00 isn't going to be fixed.
And the same way Blue Ridge.
Right.
Not 88 compliant.
And, right. It's unfortunate, but, you know, the jail isn't going to get any bigger, and we're paying how much a month to?
$5,000.
$5,000 to $10,000 to house inmates in different facilities out of the county that.
Per inmate.
Yep.
And we have 12 currently.
12 currently.
And that's not including transportation costs.
And so there's a lot of extra costs in all of that that, you know. It's the unfortunate side of growth and.
You know, it seems like a whole lot right now, booming, just boom. But if this would have been done over a certain amount of time, over the years, it wouldn't be this much.
If it'd been done over the past 15 years, one school, you know, every few years, then we wouldn't be in this shape, but we are.
You know, instead of patching it up, patching it up, working on one project at a time, I just feel like it's just time, our time to get it done.
Or not completing projects.
Yeah.
Right, like the fields at Smoky Mountain High.
I would still like to see if there's any way that we could get it down to 30 cents to help protect the taxpayers.
Is there anything new that we don't have to do this year?
Well, we've already said the greenway.
That's not going to cut it too. That's not going to cut it too soon.
Right, no, I'm, I'm saying...
We, we kind of outlined it and, and for, you know, I, I think we ran over this in the budget discussions was, you know, kind of an anomaly. A lot of communities, um, making, for instance, they have one of the lowest in the state, they don't have fire tax, which we don't have fire tax for the majority of the county. So you've got seven million dollars that, that pretty much is being paid by the general fund for fire coverage. And so that, if you take that out, it would be in the, you know, twenty, twenty-nine seconds.
Yeah, right, let's see, next year, Commissioner Jennings, that's going to cut it, I mean, we're going to be able, if we're able to implement this, it's going to be able to cut it to thirty-two, hopefully down to twenty-eight-five or twenty-nine. Uh, Macon County, they're at what, twenty-six?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven? And how, how much, uh, is their service tax?
They're, they're ranging between, you know, four and eight, I think.
Add eight, thirty-five cents, so they're actually more than us, but I'm, I mean...
So they're, they're at twenty-seven and the lowest tax, fire service tax rate is four, that's thirty-one.
Right, so...
Then the other one's going to be thirty-five.
If they put it all together like we did, we'd, we'd have a lower rate than Macon County.
That was right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand, I'm just...
You know, if we implement the fire tax, then some people will see a cut.
Yep.
And some people will see an increase, uh, because of the service, the service tax, because it's not going to be a flat rate across the county that'll be based on district.
It'd be a flat rate, wouldn't it? It'd be a flat rate.
It would, because I was saying it was going to be by...
Didn't you check with the, uh...
Yeah, there, there are...
When you overlap?
Yeah, yeah, there, there are mechanisms that, that can do that as an overhaul and then kind of taking into consideration what, you know, taxes already has with fire tax, that overlap. Um, but there are mechanisms to make that happen.
It would actually reduce cashers.
Yeah.
Now, cashers areas got their own fire tax now. If we do one for the whole county, it'll be a fire tax, money's coming off of the thirty-two cents or whatever. But then some's going to go back in the fire tax. What does that do for, the cashers' fire tax would go away completely?
No, it's, um, you know, right now, I think they're, they're at two point seven million, and if you were to take out, you know, what the county and board and other districts, like just the firemen, um, I think it's like, well, average of one point two five, somewhere in there. So if you made that computation, then the tax rate would decrease from like two point four-two down to like one point four-two. So if, if you take out the difference, so it'd be decreasing, but then it'd be adding on for the whole county, because that's what the counties, you know, that's what the whole district will be paying for. So it's a supplemental.
Every department's going to be getting the same amount of money they're getting now.
Correct.
Setting it, that way the taxpayer can see what they're paying for.
And then you have, the, the whole county would have the advantage of having, you know, around fifty-five million, that can respond to anywhere in the county, pretty much. And that, that's that, that's the advantage is to try to reduce people's insurance rates and insurance to pay in, you know?
So, in other words, everybody in the county will have a, a fire rate, like cashers has had, the numbers will just be adjusted per wherever you're living.
Yeah.
It'd be a flat rate across the whole county, cashers will be reduced.
The problem with the flat rate was, that's the reason cashers had their own, their own rate before, because the flat rate across the board wasn't giving them what they needed. So how are we going to board that?
The, the, the flat rate will be counted in consideration and the, the, the tax rate for cashers will come down in an adjusted inflation. Does that make sense? So, so, so we're getting same, cashers getting same, casher clumble, Sapphire has the same, and then as, as Qualup and everybody else. And then that supplemental that they needed will be adjusted. So instead of paying for county everything, um, and that tax, which is two and a, two point four, now that rate will be one point four.
Actually, the public, I mean, won't it benefit cashers?
Heck, it will.
Yeah.
I mean, they're going to get the same amount of money, their needs will be met, um, that's what the intent of the service tax, when it was put in place, uh, was...
I mean, right now, they're paying, if we adopt this, they're going to be thirty-two cent, plus, what is it, eight cent? Six cent?
Six cent.
Six cent? So they're paying, what, thirty-eight? They're going to be paying thirty-eight if we do this, what he's talking about. It's, it's going to work out so much better because...
I, I agree, I know.
Because they're not going to have to be paying the full six cent and then the rest of the counties benefiting, if that makes sense, what you were saying in the last meeting. The six cent will be reduced, uh, for whatever we're going to do across the whole board. That way, cashers gets exactly what they've been getting, Qualup will be getting, uh, what they're going to be getting, um, so on and so forth, so will Culloway.
The difference is, what my concern is, I just don't want to go back like it was in twenty-fourteen, whenever this whole thing started, because they weren't getting enough, they had to go to their own tax.
I think...
So we go back to what, that's basically that was in twenty-fourteen, but it was one for the whole county. I just want to make sure we don't get in that same problem.
Understandable, yeah.
And so, really, right now, they're paying their own tax and part of the counties. Nobody else in the county is doing that. And this, this will make it fair and right across the board by doing that. I just don't want to get in shape where they, they're needing to bag and borrow money more every year like they were before fifteen. So, sounds, uh, great idea, I love that.
Yeah, so that's, next year, that's going to, it's going to break it down, they're going to be able, taxpayers are going to be able to see.
See exactly what the, the taxes are for emergency services from fire.
Yeah, most people are going to look at that person, that twenty-something cent, oh, we got to reduce. And then they're going to look at the service, you know, so, but everybody's going to pay it.
Just with Fox, you're paying that, but it's still on...
It's same thing, same thing.
Well, I understand what you're saying about next year, but is anybody else on board with trying to get it down to thirty cents?
I don't think we can, this year.
Can we?
Without a bottom.
Is there any way?
I mean, the, if you look at the major drivers, unless you just want to stop projects or, you know, stop the fire coverage, there, there's two big drivers at this point.
The concern is, you know, you're talking about getting to thirty-two or getting it to thirty, people in my district pay thirty-eight cents. So, you, and, and that's the higher priced properties in the county, so...
Well, the cashier's fire taxes want to be two point four-two, so they would be paying thirty-four, thirty-four.
On a property that's valued higher. So it hurts more for people that talk to me about taxes going up, especially, you know, long-time family-held properties. So I'm a hundred percent with you, if there's any way we can cut anything, I, I think we should, but I don't know if we can.
And, and I know that, you know, back in the early part of the spring, we did a resolution asking for a homestead exemption, which did not go anywhere. They pulled all those bills off, which would help you with the generational...
Yeah.
Like, or the fir-, or, or just the homeowners that declared residency in, in Jackson County, so hopefully that will come around next...
Legislature really needs to come together and get, get something passed where we can do that, um...
So you think it would be possible to get a homestead act?
Nothing's impossible, it's just going to take, you know, a champion at the state legislature to make it happen.
It, it's been set up three or four times and they always...
Never, never makes it past the House.
I've talked to several people up there about this concern and, and some of the people, one guy told me today, he said, look, some of us got the money to pay it, we're not worried about it. And, but for those people, like we were just talking, it's a burden for them. He said, what you should do is the county has charged us more and those people less. I said, you can't do that, that's what you're talking about.
Correct.
But they'd be willing to do that, I mean, a lot of them would.
Well, if, if the, uh, state will do that homestead, or I mean, we'd be able to, we'd be able to, that would help the residents out a whole lot, um, so... But it's out of our hands, there's nothing that we can do legally, uh, so...
Roger Housen, soon.
Yeah, right, right, Mike Clampett and Kevin Corbin.
That's what you were saying, all hundred counties had to agree on.
Yeah, when it comes to machine react, that it's all one hundred counties, there's no local bills that's going to give you special taxing authority or anything like that, so it's got to be, you know, to all one hundred counties.
The whole state has to agree.
Well, they don't have to agree, they have to get a bill that's going to change the machine react, so...
I, I just don't think that we're going to cut it anymore this, this go around because of all the much-needed projects that we're, we're doing all over the county. We've already, I know it's a reducing the rate, but it's probably not a reducing what people are paying, but that falls back to reevaluations. And last time that we had a reevaluation was what year? Twenty-twenty-one? And while, in twenty-twenty-one was actual reevaluation or was the... It was a reevaluation?
Yeah, it was delayed, I think, one year, it was supposed to be in twenty-twenty and it delayed one year.
There's been years where property values have decreased.
Yeah.
In two thousand eight, everybody knows that, and some people were stuck with half-million-dollar loans on...
Hundred thousand dollar properties.
Yeah, well, that was on the bottom, fell out of everything.
Yeah, I think if, I mean, if somebody had a little bit of common sense, they'll be able to read into this and say, okay, you know, we're not just taking the money and just setting it aside. We're actually taking the money and, and doing what's...
Putting chunks in ground to fix the things that are broken.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I think everybody, not everybody, but there's a... Most people support public schools, uh, so, uh, you know, that's, that's the biggest part of it.
Do we get any confirmation on the, uh, tax neutral rate?
Twenty-six point eight-nine is what it ended up in.
I know we hadn't, last time we talked, we hadn't got confirmation on that.
Why is this brought down? I got a question on page four right here. It says, building inspection fee, seven hundred and eighty thousand. What does that include? I mean, what does that cost for?
That's for all the permits coming through building inspections, coming...
That's received, right?
That's what they received money-wise.
Okay, that's... Okay, I went one page too far when I asked that. Sorry.
We, do we need to have another meeting on this?
I, I feel like we've pulled this one pretty hard.
Yeah, we, I feel like we beat it to death, yeah.
I appreciate you guys trying hard, you, I know you already cut a lot out of it, and I don't mean to act like I'm appreciative of you doing that. So I know you worked hard on it, it's, it's hard to even wrap your head around it. And I know you guys have tried hard, thank, thank you both.
Yeah, both done a good job.
Is there a motion to approve our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And a second? Second, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Jennings?
I don't know, but I would have one more to make.
Is there a motion to...
I'm with Michael, I mean, all we can do is try, we can dig around and see if there's something else we can come up with.
Is there a motion to table this?
I make a motion, we table this.
Is there a second? Is there, uh, all those in favor? Say aye.
Budget's been tabled, what date would we like to set as our next, next meeting?
Next week?
Next Tuesday? Okay. Let me... On the, on the twenty-fourth?
This Friday, here's...
Yeah, twenty-fourth, do we want to say six? Does that work for everyone? Six?
One, four, six.
Six, one, six o'clock. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Moving on to resolutions to close out our capital projects, and Ms. Fox?
I deserve six o'clock. Okay, the first resolution is for the Jackson County Dealsborough Complex Project. The county transferred five million, three hundred ninety thousand from Capital Reserve Fund project. That's where the animal rescue center is, in, uh, oh, forget Dealsborough. The project has been completed and all, all certificates have been paid. There's a balance of seven thousand, seven forty-five, fifty-two in the project fund, and this resolution authorizes it to be transferred back to Capital Reserve Fund. The budget amendment is transfer back to Capital Reserve. This shows the complete project expenses and revenues. The second resolution is a closeout of the South West Street Community College Health Science Building. The county transferred three million, two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars from the school capital reserve fund for the project. There's a hundred and forty-one thousand, eight fifty-seven, fifty-five left in the project, and it will be transferred back to the school capital reserve fund.
Is this the project that's just ongoing, they haven't really started on?
No, but this is complete.
Of the health science, that's what, okay, that's what I was wanting to say, thank you.
All three of these are completed projects. And the final one is the Island Services Center project. The county transferred two million, seventy-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars from Capital Reserve. And there's a balance of sixty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars left in that project, and they'll be transferred back to Capital Reserve. I'd be glad to answer any questions on the resolutions.
Questions for Ms. Fox?
With all these transfers coming back in, what does that leave our capital reserve fund?
It's around two million, there's, um, this transfer from more back to school capital reserve, and it does the county's capital reserve. And it can, it can be used for the projects that are coming.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve these resolutions as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hooper?
Yes.
Chairman Lutzen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, lastly, tonight, we have a resolution to display the flag at half-staff by order of the chairman. This is, uh, whereas by order of the chairman of the board of commissioners, the flag shall be flown at half-staff upon the death of principal figures of the Jackson County government as a mark of respect and memory. Uh, whereas in the event of death of officials, the flag is to be displayed at half-staff according to chairman's instructions or orders or in accordance with recognized customs or practices not inconsistent with law. This is, uh, just to streamline, uh, any, any state, local official that, uh, has been, uh, a public servant, uh, any citizen that has been a public servant, to, to just honor their memory a, at, uh, at their passing. Is there a motion to approve this, uh, resolution?
So moved.
And a second?
Take it.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Hooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chairman Lutzen?
Yes.
With that, tonight, we do have a need to go into closed session for, uh, legal and real estate. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? We'll take a quick... None opposed? We'll take a quick recess.
Closed session. There is no action taken with no further business this evening. I'll seek a motion for adjournment.
Over.